Rule call.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Shakur is absent. Councilmember Phillips?
Here.
Councilmember Armstrong?
Here.
Councilmember Perkins?
Here.
Councilmember McCafferty?
Here.
Vice Mayor Grineau is absent. Mayor Miller?
Here.
And Town Attorney is present remotely.
All right, item two, discussion regarding water reclamation facility capacities and expansion analysis and rec- recommendations.
Hi, Mark. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, a pleasure to be before you this evening. I am the presenter tonight along with Taylor Pierce, who is with PACE Advanced Water Engineering. He's the project director and professional engineer that will be co-presenting as well with me. Get the presentation up, please. Thank you. So tonight, we're going to talk about a priority assessment that was needed for our water reclamation facility. Before we do, I just want to have some terms of art that will be in this presentation, so we're all on the same page. Influent, it's raw sewage or other liquid, raw untreated or partially treated flowing into a reservoir basin treatment process or reclamation facility. So influent is what's coming down the pipe. Affluent is sewage or influent that has been treated in a water reclamation facility. So it's coming out of the plant. Water reclamation facility is a facility that we were referencing at Old Home Manor. And reclaimed water or recycled water is influent that has been treated or reclaimed to an acceptable water quality standard for reuse. So the facility is currently experiencing peak flow volumes that require expansion. You probably have, some folks and councilmembers in the Water Utility Subcommittee have had discussions with staff on this. You've probably heard other discussions. I did want to point out the map on the right, our current water reclamation facility is, I can't get my cursor, centrally, north centrally located within the Tannenino Valley. It is not ideally located for any sewer in north of this location. So all sewer connections would have to be lifted back from the north portion of the Tannenino Valley all the way back to this facility, if this is the only facility that we had in the community. The facility is also currently connected with the groundwater recycling and recharge underground storage facility at Old Home Manor. So our reclaimed water that's treated the highest standards is being recharged back to the offer at Old Home Manor, just to the east of the reclamation facility. But an overall ideal centralized facility location would be better located at the north portion of the town, where both facilities potentially could work in tandem, where everything is gravity flow. No lifting of influent back to this facility. So the question is, is it in the best interest of the town to expand the current facility at a cost of potentially eight to fifteen million dollars, based on its current location and future water importation and mitigation needs? So an assessment was really needed to evaluate this current reclamation facility and with these other needs for the future. So in February of 2023, PACE Advanced Water Engineering was brought onboard to assess the town's current water reclamation facility. The assessment looked at opportunities and options for the minimal capital investment now, potentially two to three million dollars, at the current facility for expansion and provide enough time to evaluate a northern centralized facility and future larger expense down the road in the near future with facilities, for a facility that can handle townwide sewer. So that was the goal of the assessment. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Taylor to, to talk about the assessment.
Evening.
Good evening. Thanks, Mark. Thanks, council, for having me. My name is Taylor Pierce. I'm an engineer with PACE. We did this evaluation, and I believe we submitted it back in June, June first. For your consideration, we looked at the hydraulic and biological capacity of your existing facility, which is a half MGD facility, which sounds for half a million gallons per day that you can treat at the facility. The existing facility is sized based on influent loading conditions. Those conditions that were used to design the facility were 250 milligrams per liter of BOD, 220 milligrams per liter suspended solids, and 50 milligrams per liter of TKN, which I will get to why that is important in a minute, but that is what your facility was originally designed around. It's pretty typical, non-industrial wastewater design values. So we looked at your facility. Okay, great. This table shows what your historical flow rates have been into the facility. So when we're looking at the hydraulic capacity of what your plant can do, we looked at what was coming in currently. So as I mentioned, you're sized for about half a million gallons per day. Historical flow rates have not exceeded that. These average day flows and peak day flows are consistent with typical peaking factors that you see in residential sewer, where overnight, nobody's using the system, so there's low flow. When people are getting ready in the morning, you see a spike in flow. It levels off in the middle of the day, and then it peaks again when everyone goes home for dinner. So those are the two peaks you see, and I believe there's a chart on the next one. Yeah. Well, you can kind of see it levels off, and then it goes back down overnight. So what I want to highlight on this from a hydraulic loading capacity, and if anything I'm saying is unclear or boring. Yeah. Ask a question. Blurry, I can't help you there, but I can explain what's going on. So the orange line that goes straight across right in the middle, that is your peak day flow, and the gray line below it is your average day flow. Those are perfectly acceptable values. What is not acceptable is the yellow line, which is your peak hourly flow. So for one hour a day, you are flowing at about twenty-two and a half thousand gallons per hour, which is greater than what your facility is rated for. And in our evaluation, there is some interpretation of what the facility is sized for, because the membranes that are using your facility have a maximum instantaneous flux rate. Again, it sounds like gibberish, but it means it's the most water you can suck through the straw in an instantaneous period, which is an hour or less. You guys are above it for four to five hours a day. So you are exceeding the manufacturer's recommended flux through those membranes pretty much every day. And that is okay. They'll work, but you are putting unnecessary stress on the system because of the way that the sewer enters the plant. And it's just, it's how every system works, you know, the peaks ebbs and flows with your daily flow. So that's what we have summarized on this slide from seven to noon. Your flows are increasing, and it peaks out about twenty-two thousand gallons per hour.
Have there been any detrimental outcomes because of that? Do you have to shut down?
You, you can have some detrimental results from that. You can break membranes. You can delaminate membranes. These are flat plate membranes, and Kubota makes a really quality product, so you guys don't have any real failures that I know of. But even the best, even a Lamborghini is going to break down if you stress it for, for too long. So usually, when you design these systems, you provide some level of redundancy with an N plus one factor, where you have the number of required membranes, and then an extra one on top of that to handle flow. Your system does not have an extra membrane. Should one break, your capacity of your plant will be reduced by that volume that would have gone through that membrane. So you don't have any extra membranes available. So this is all bad stuff. We're getting out of that right now, so we'll get to the good stuff in a minute. There is good stuff, I promise. So we'll go through that. I'm going to summarize a little bit on the biological deficiencies. It's even more boring talk than that. But basically, the influent that you guys are seeing at your plant, the carbon coming in, the BOD, is a little bit lower than what was designed, and your suspended solids is a little bit lower, but your nitrogen is way higher. So the ratio is what is important, your carbon to nitrogen ratio. And it's, it's out of whack. I've talked to Mike about it. We don't know exactly what causes it. He's called it weird, which is a good word for what, what your wastewater. And without like a thorough investigation of your collection system, there's no way I could know what causes it, but you do have high nitrogen coming into your system. And it wasn't sized for that. The basins are too small biologically to hold it long enough to treat that nitrogen. So has nothing to do with the amount of water going through the plant, but the actual loading that's coming in has created some nitrogen issues that I think first started their concern from, from Mike over there. So.
And our system pulls the nitrogen out?
The filters don't pull any nitrogen out. They, they just pull solid material out. So all nitrate will, will pass through if it doesn't get treated. So the good thing about nitrogen, it's pretty easy to treat. You just need time and oxygen and carbon. So something people do kind of equate it to very easily is compost. Right? If you have a pile of dry leaves, it takes a long time for them to compost. But if you mix in like banana peels and some other stuff, breaks down really fast. So you got to have them, and the, the banana peel is a nitrogen source in this one, so it's a little backwards. But you need to have carbon and nitrogen in a proper ratio to create the environment that the bacteria will work the most effectively. And right now, you don't have that. At least you didn't. But I talked to Mike, and he started adding carbon to the system, and it more or less equated since then. So it's running better. You don't have any nitrogen in your effluent at the time, right now. So moving forward, the second part of our evaluation, after evaluating what's already there, is making recommendations on what you can do moving forward. So we came up with three, kind of four recommendations. So the first recommendation was, kind of presented to us with the project, was you're always planning to expand another membrane plant just north of where your current membrane trains sit. In order to account for the additional nitrogen in your influent, they need to be bigger basins. So that's why it is bigger than the one shown. So you're certainly allowed to do that approach. It gives you additional capacity. It gives you the most capacity out of any of the ones that I'm going to present. It's also the most expensive. So, yeah. Two new MBR trains, three hundred and thirty thousand gallons each. New membranes, which are going to be the most expensive part of that process. And it bumps you up to an average flow of zero point seven four MGD. Now.
What's, I'm sorry?
Zero point seven four. So like three quarters of an, of a million gallons.
Million, okay, thank you.
Yeah. That is more or less derating what your current system is, because there is a lack of redundancy in those. But it would solve your peak hydraulic flows that you get during the middle of the day, that you're struggling to pass through the membranes, because it is too much water for those particular units. So that will run you, as Mark alluded to, about eight million dollars. That is based on prices that we have got on recent projects. I mentioned we turned this in in June. It's probably still pretty close, but the way things are going, you never know.
Not quite doubled yet.
Yeah, it, it probably hasn't doubled yet, but every day, you never, it, it could be going up.
Three million dollars. Can I ask a question just about alternative one, number one?
Yep, go for it.
What, what would it increase our capacity to?
So it would be about three quarters of a million gallons per day. So you'd be going from a half, quote unquote, half, even though we say that this is probably not a true half million gallon plant right now, because you don't have any redundancy. But. I, yeah, as an engineer, I do love putting redundancy on everything.
And that said, the max flow of one million forty thousand?
Yes. You could, you could max flow, your biggest day, Super Bowl Sunday, whatever it is, could be over a million gallons. You can't do that for every day. Your solids will catch up.
And that would accommodate a lot of future development in the, in the next five years, maybe?
I totally skipped over that part. Yeah. So we project that if you go, you're not going to hit five hundred thousand gallons per day, average day flow, for the next ten years, based on the current growth that we have recorded for the past, I think, five years.
But our effluent flows are already at four thirty-five.
Correct. Yeah. So let me go backwards.
So there's not a lot of room left during those peak times now? You're only allowed three slides, by the way.
All right. So I'm talking about the first column, your average flow. That, that is what your permitted capacity will be. That's what ADQ is going to hit you on. And you're only at about three hundred. I think you're closer to like three fifty now? Three twenty-five. So that, that's the number, which still gives you almost two hundred thousand gallons, or, you know, two thirds of what you're already producing to grow into that. However, the peak day, and really what I'm not showing on this table, is the peak hour. That yellow line up top, that is, that is the problem that you guys have, because that is when you are over the rated instantaneous flux of the membranes that you have in your system. So are we good on alternative one details for now?
I am. Everybody good? Everybody good?
All right. So alternative two A, which is probably the most feasible option, but we'll get to that. The two basins you see to the right there are what we call flow equalization basins. So that would take any of that flow that goes over that red line into the peak hour flow and divert it into an equalization basin, that then you would then push back through the plant at night when there's no flow. So it allows you to kind of shave the top. Energy companies call it peak shaving, when you're not, not using energy at the peak times and stuff like that. So it's the same concept. You're leveling off your flow, so it's about the same through the system the whole day.
But that does not increase the capacity of our plant.
It does not increase the capacity of your plant.
Okay.
But as I mentioned, you have about two hundred thousand, a hundred and seventy-five thousand gallons of expansion that you can still accommodate at the current facility.
Which would take how long? How long to eat that up with our growth?
I said, I said ten years. In, in our evaluation, we said ten years.
Ten years?
Are you basing it on the last five or the last ten years?
That is based on.
And then.
And it's constantly going up?
And don't we have to have, before we hit that max, is that what the EPA's max amount is, or is that the max amount of the plant? Because when you hit eighty percent, aren't you supposed to be in construction or something?
Oh, you're supposed to be in planning at eighty percent. So as soon as you get hit eighty percent, you're supposed to start planning your expansion.
So is that, is that max? Is that eighty percent, or is that max?
You can jump in, yeah.
No, I understand that.
Yeah, what, what we're talking about for the, for the rules for planning and, and construction is when we're, we're talking about average daily flow, when you hit eighty percent of the flow capacity of the plant, in this case, it would be at four hundred thousand gallons per day for the average. We need to start planning and designing. And then at, I believe at ninety percent, you have to be under construction. So that's, that's the flow. The wrinkle with this one is because of the components of the influent coming in, our capa, our treatment capacity is not as much as our flow capacity right now. So what he's kind of talking about with some of these alternatives is to try and equalize those peak flows so that the average flow is more consistent with what we're seeing.
But I think we need to make an accurate decision by basing that on how soon are we going to have to come right back?
Right.
And enlarge the plant. That's why I'm asking.
Yeah, in the past few years, we've seen it pretty consistent, twenty to twenty-five thousand gallons per day for each year of growth.
So we can go ten more years before we hit our max max?
Yeah.
At the current rate.
At the current rate. If we had some sort of.
Perkinsville forty-four comes back and jumps onboard, then.
Yeah, that, that would create a little spike. More importantly, might be if some of the large apartments come in. When you start, Perkinsville forty-four is a hundred and sixty-two homes, daily, for your information.
The consideration of putting more people on sewer.
Yeah, the.
But we do things faster.
Yeah, the single-family residential, also that development, they don't build a hundred and sixty-two homes in a year. They're talking about a ten-plus year build out for those types of developments. So that kind of fits.
And then, second question.
The market.
Frank, we talked about this equalizer tank up to five or six years ago. And I thought you got approval to do it, and it hasn't been done?
We, the first blush of what we looked at was, we were expecting about a million and a half dollar project. And when they did a design concept on it, the cost estimate came in at over four million. So we figured, let's back up, bring pace in to. This is basically a cost benefit analysis for how to proceed with improving the plant we got while looking for expansion as well, is kind of what we're talking about right now.
Okay.
So.
Did I get the numbers right, Mike, for the Kimley Horn?
Yeah, and Kimley Horn did some study work, and, and we shared that with PACE as well, so.
You know, does everybody know Mr. Bovee? And I'm not sure who the other guy is.
Oh, I know Mike.
Yeah, let me introduce.
Thank you.
If I can.
I think there's some people here.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Just to let you guys know, Mike Bovee is our utility manager for the town. Been with the town more years than I care to count. So twenty-one years. We've got him for another few months. And then Jesse is our, is our lead plant operator. So Jesse runs the plant, knows all of the down and dirty details of the day-to-day operations of the plant, so.
Thank you.
All right, thanks. Thank you.
Sorry for the interruption.
No, it's perfect. I mean, I'd, I'd rather have you guys engaged than not understanding what I'm talking about. So the alternative two A goes to half a million gallons, which is what you're at now, but allows you to level it off and equalize the flow. So.
So it basically just takes the influent and just stores it to where you can feed it slower rate at a later time.
Yep.
Okay. I just want to make sure I.
Every, every day, those basins will go up and down with your influent. When it's, when it's got high flow, it's going to rise, and when you're at low flow, it'll, it'll lower that level in that basin.
And how many gallons were those two tanks? Are those two?
They're a hundred.
Seventy-six thousand.
Uh, I believe they're each a hundred thousand gallons. Yeah. So two hundred thousand gallons total.
And it's open?
Uh, it can be, and I would recommend it to be. If you want to look at covered, you could do covered basins as well.
Can you go back one more slide, please? Up, so forward.
That one?
There are eight thou, about eight thousand gallons.
Oh, so that's eight thousand gallons per foot. So if you make them seventeen feet deep, you're looking like a hundred and fifteen thousand gallons.
I'm with you now. Thank you.
You got it.
A question real quick, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Um, with that option, would there be ongoing maintenance needed for those tanks?
Yes. So the ongoing maintenance would include aeration, which you could do with a floating aerator or mixer. And then there will be a pump, because once the water flows in, it's got to be able to come back out. So there will be power costs associated with that. You know, the pump will have, again, I'll have a redundant pump in that, any good engineer would. So you'll have at least two pumps going on that. And those would require, you know, service every year, so.
Thank you.
Two, three million dollars.
Three million dollars, which is less than what Frank just said was what your last price was. So I, I do feel confident in these numbers. I think there were some areas that could have been improved on from the previous report, but I did piggyback on a lot of their same findings and agreed with them. So they weren't too far off, but I, I do think it's with the right contractor and approach and timing, that, yeah, you could do this project for around three million dollars. So. Two B is similar in that it will be used as an equalization tank. However, it is alternative one without the membranes installed. So the membranes, as I mentioned, are the most expensive part of the process. If you go with the EQ, you can then buy the membranes as you need them. So if you do develop two hundred, five hundred new homes immediately and have them filled pretty quickly, and you need to expand your plant, that gives you a viable route to populate the membranes as you go and not buy all at the same time. You know, you could fill in three or four at a time. I think there's.
If a membrane fails, how quick do you have to have one in its place to keep operating at what we're doing?
Tough question.
Didn't we just recently have?
Mike, do you have any spare membranes?
Yeah, we have about fifty spare membranes right now.
Fifty? Five zero? Wow.
So the membranes come.
There's four thousand membranes.
Yeah, gotcha.
Just last year, we replaced, we removed all of them and cleaned them. About seven hundred of them were damaged that were replaced. We have maybe fifty of them right now that we have in stock. We've had an issue, and we can hope to get them to the team.
Thank you.
That's fine, Mike. But I'm sorry, but you have to run up to the microphone so people at home can hear you. Please, if you wouldn't mind. Or get the handheld, Mike. Mike, word for word.
I can do that for you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Like I said, we have four thousand membranes in that plant. And last year, we, we removed all the membranes. And we had Kubota supplied us with a membrane cleaner. We cleaned all of them. There's about seven hundred of them that were damaged that were replaced. And in doing that, we have about fifty of them now in stock that we have. So if we had an issue with something that we can identify a damaged membrane, we can pull that out, pull the cassette out, change the membrane.
So that's a good thing to mention, that cassette and a membrane are different. They're ten little, ten little squares shown in that basin. Those are cassettes, which are just a package of four hundred, I think, or something like that, membranes in each one of those. So, yeah, that's, that's how the memory works. You have to pull out the whole cassette to change out a membrane. So I would say you don't want to have a membrane down for very long, but having spares, you pull it, the whole cassette comes out, you replace a membrane, you put it back in, hopefully within a day.
So just to make sure I understand what two B is, you initially build it as, and we would use it as an equalization basin. However, it would have been engineered to be an expansion like one A or one.
Yes.
So that, that's, that seems pretty forward-thinking, too, you know, both, us worlds. If we need it, we have it, but we don't need all the guts of it right now.
Then again, how more expensive, much more.
He hasn't disclosed that yet.
So. Buying filters or the membranes or the cassettes, you know, ten years from now versus now.
I, I don't think the dollar figure is going to scare you as much as you think. But the one thing I will point out is that as you populate those cassettes, you are losing equalization capacity. So you then start reintroducing the problem of higher flux rates.
And we're not, we're not increasing our plant capability either, though.
Not, not originally. Every membrane you add will increase your capacity. So it's, it's a give or take. You get.
And are existing pumps and the, are they, were they oversized for the recharge to accommodate a growth?
I could tell you that real quick.
Did you ask if that included those things? No, no, I'm just wondering right now, because it seems like they're fully loaded now. So if we're producing more rechargeable water, how do we get more water in the same amount of size pipe?
Are you talking about the pumps that pump out to our recharge basin?
Yes, yes.
Right. They're, they're designed for the half million gallon day average flow is what our affluent, we call them the affluent pumps, that pump out to the recharge basin. So if we do something to increase just the treatment capacity for now, it would not affect those pumps.
Okay.
But if we add to over the half a million gallon per day flow capacity of the plant, we need to look also at the UV and the, and the, and the recharge pumps as well, because that's all part of the system. If that, that helps.
Because you're not recharging five hundred thousand, or you're.
We're about three twenty right now.
Okay.
On average.
Right.
And if we, if we make that flow more consistent throughout the day, that helps those pumps run more consistently, because those pumps peak and drop just like the rest of the plant, so.
That saves energy, too.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, so you would have to look at all the components of the process to make sure that the, the unit size is correct. The UV, I believe, can handle it, but the affluent pumps and even your influent pumps, you got to make sure that they can deliver that flow into the facility. So, yeah, like we noted, there's nothing to throw away about this design. It is, it is to be utilized in the future, and the price for that is about four million. And the caveat with that is that membranes are going to be on additional cost on top of that, once you do need them.
Should we go to that? Should we transition to making that, right?
No, I got one question. Is all the plumbing and all the pumps and all that stuff going to be included in that? When you put in that for a basin, I mean, the pumps up to it? And we would just have to stick in the membranes and the cassettes or whatever you call them?
That, yeah, you'll put some pipe in, in there, but you will not put any internal pipe into the basin. So there would be additional piping that would be required.
And pumps?
Uh, you'd probably have to have a permeate pump as well.
So it could be quite expensive.
It can add up, yeah. Those are not. This is this is effectively another e- equalization option.
Just a concrete box, correct?
It is a concrete box that is designed around having other stuff in it in the future. Yeah.
I think that pad's already laid out for that, isn't it?
You do have plenty of space on your facilities.
Isn't there a pad already there? It's already kind of put there for this expansion right to the north of it? The existing basins?
It's just dirt.
It's just dirt.
Okay.
Uh, but it is a cleared off area. It's available for use for this project, um, but there's not any actual structure yet.
Okay.
So. With that.
Wait, didn't you say there was four?
So, yes, I did. Um, our fourth alternative in our evaluation is just a conceptual ultimate build-out of what your facility could look like if you were to fully expand and use your full footprint of that site. And it separates your biological, keeps your EQ, and fully populates two separate membranes. I believe we're at two point two MGD. I can verify that. Oh, I did not print out that alternative. So I'm going to just say that, yeah, it was two point two MGD for a full facility of that.
And cost?
I did not do a cost for that. It's just a conceptual of what it would look like all the way down the road, so.
Thank you very much.
No problem. I'm going to turn it back over to Mark.
Don't go far.
I was right there, front row. Thanks.
Thanks, Taylor. Um, so there was some great question asked by council. Um, one thing to bring up um is that nothing's to throw away with any of these options. Whether it's an equalization basin that would be utilized with future expansion of the current plant, or it's the basin you saw in the other alternative that would then become a membrane cartridge center for additional capacity of the plant. After having conversations discussing discussing the technical memorandum, um, we think that alternative two A or two B, uh, which was recommended by Pace, um, are the best. And again, it goes to, if we were just to, yes, Mr. Mayor.
When you're saying two A or two B, what do you, what are two A and two B? I have option one, two, and three.
Option two and three.
Two and three. Okay, thank you.
She knows how to translate it to you.
I was saying two A and two B. I thought maybe I missed something, sorry.
To be or not to be.
There you go.
So again, it's um, we're looking at this as a minimum investment now that could delay um by by us ten years. We're looking at an average of ten years of time to further assess a what I call an ultimate build-out for reclamation, which would be a northern reclamation facility where everything gravity flows to the town would be somewhere north of in the community. Not that this plant would be mothball. The there could be um these plants working in tandem, but it gives the integrated water master plan engineers to look at that northern reclamation option. It looks at our importation of water and that plant potentially serving as part of that reclaim reclaim water that'd be part of mitigation for the upper Verde River. So there's a lot of components here, a lot of balls in there that we're juggling, trying to make the best assessment. So that was the real goal of this, to give us some time to evaluate with our 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 planning uh objectives right now. And and if we were to expand the plant and invest a huge amount of money, there may not be that investment for a northern plant in the next ten or twenty years. So we're looking at all of these financial options in the best interest of having what's the best recommendation. So again, it's trying to buy as much time with the current facility, expand it to accommodate what um what Taylor said is the the peak flows coming in, the water quality issues, trying to balance that out. So staff right now collectively believe that alternative two A, um, that second option you looked at is the most suitable option. Um, again, the integrated water master plan engineers are looking at the northern facility and how that would all fit together. Um, alternative two A will allow for better management and treatment with peak flows processing. Again, one thing that um we I think was barely touched on is storing the uh the influent and then processing that later in the day will actually save a lot of operational costs. I know Joe monitors that, um, the finance director on those energy costs. We're processing a lot of water in the peak energy time of the day. We don't want to do that. We want to um process water when it's non-peak. So um with that, staff, we're probably bringing back one of these alternatives, probably that option two A um in a future council for recommendations. There'd be quite a process with engineering and then obviously the engineering component going into construction, so. But that will be brought back to you fairly soon, because again, time is of the essence, as Taylor pointed out. We're at some um some flow issues right now. With that, turn it up to uh open up any questions or comments.
I got a question.
Yes.
So, construction um timeframe from start to finish, where what does that look like?
So I'll bring up Frank, and uh Taylor may want to add in.
He's going to say it depends.
Well, he's an engineer. Oh, me or Taylor?
Both, yeah.
Depends on the constituents of the of the influent we've got, no, anyway. No, I'll say uh timeframe, this is a typical construction project. Uh, so design, you're looking at, I talked to Taylor, maybe six months is a is a very optimistic timeframe for design, once you get notice to proceed. So I'll add in my government red tape on that, because we have to issue uh the the requests for qualifications, your RFQs or RFPs. Needs a few months for that. Uh, but what I would recommend for this project is we do the alternative bid process of C Mar. That's how the plant was originally built. Construction manager at risk. So let me cancel my phone. That's our town attorney calling me. Uh, so uh I think we're probably to get to a construction about a year, year and a half out. Um, but with C Mar, you can you can condense those timeframes. So about three months to get someone on board. You start designing it about another three or four months. You bring your contractor into that C Mar process, so they can have some say in the design components of it. And then you finish that up. So a year to fourteen months, you're under construction. And so uh eighteen to twenty-four months, you may be able to complete construction.
Like from now?
Yeah.
Simmy, or Andy, you had a question?
I did.
Do you remember what it was?
Oh, I just wanted to see the the figures again, please, for two A, if that's what staff's bringing.
Option one was seven million, option two A in this case was three million, option two B was four million.
Yeah, and I and I will say, as far as two A and B go, they're very close. Uh. The only difference, the reason we're recommending two A a little bit more than two B or two instead of three is uh it buys us a little time to consider more the the northern plant, which was always with the Del Rio development, they'd always planned on building a northern plant. It's just when Del Rio went away, those plans got scrapped. Uh, it leads into some of the mitigation efforts for the Verde River, being able to move the the recharge and reclamation up north a little better. And another wrinkle we just looked at lately is with some of the new water quality issues we're dealing with, some of the new testing for these forever chemicals and everything. If we have to treat some of our effluent coming out of our sewer before we recharge, do we want to do that at the current plant and then move it or build an additional plant somewhere else? Or do we want to take a little bit of time and see if it's more economical to just consider that in one location? So one of the reasons we're operating two A is buys us a little time to consider some of the more long-term plans. And also with two B, the downside of two B is, once you start needing that expansion capacity, you probably need to build another equalization basin anyway to equal that flow out. So it's kind of two A, you build the EQ basins first and then work on expanding the plant later if you stay in that location. Two B, you build the basins first. It's kind of like building a car without a motor. You're going to come back and put the motor in later. But you also need to add the EQ basins later to equalize those flows. So it's it's almost six of one, a half a dozen around the other for the for the two A and two B.
Would anything you did, whether it was two A, two B, one A, or one, or any of them, technology is changing, and even in this world, it's changing. As soon as you get a new piece of equipment, by the time you're up and running, it becomes obsolete and you can't even get the parts for it. So like what assurances do you have that whatever you do today will allow for technology that's going to transition to the future without having to abandon?
Right, that that was another reason for maybe just buying some time now and looking at what technology holds, because even as new as our plan is now, I think, Mike, some of the VFDs and computer controllers and and those sorts of things are already outdated and no longer serviced.
So replay, okay, so you when you're doing the construction, you're you're aware of that and you're no, we don't want to do that, because we know what's coming on and it won't work with the system.
Yeah, and and with this C Mar process, I'm suggesting too, that'll help upgrade the plant while we're putting in either the EQ basins or the expansion type things. We will do a little step upgrade during this construction, too, with some of the existing things.
You wouldn't need to increase your like cork press capabilities or anything, would you?
We we look at all of that and just make sure if we need to add a second screw press.
Screw press, I called it.
Yeah. We would. We kind of look at all of that and see that the benefit is that screw press is smaller than the old belt press, so. So we'd look at that and see if we need to add another. It's always better to have two of everything. So uh that'd be part of the analysis of the design components.
My last question is, what does non-construction cost, you know, eighteen percent?
That's what you pay the engineers.
Is there any help on this?
That's your design and, yeah, it's design permitting, construction management, testing.
Any help, county, state, grants, anything we can tap into to help?
You want me to? Okay. Yes.
We set out a tip jar or whatever.
You can put a tip jar out there, you'll you'll get there eventually. Um, so I've worked with with plenty of 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 local and federal level um funding agencies right now. WIFA is a big one, USDA, we've got a lot of projects. They have um grant loan combinations. I I don't believe that you guys are a financially um disadvantaged community, but there are other options that they provide for for everyone in the state. Um, WIFA does the forgivable loans, where they give you a loan upfront and there's a certain percentage of the principal they'll forgive. And they do also have a certain amount of money allocated for projects that are specifically for water quality improvement, not necessarily expansion. So it's more or less considered being proactive and getting ahead of it, which you could make the argument that this is um a project that can be put under that umbrella as a water quality improvement. You would not be expanding your rated capacity of the facility either, so.
Mayor, council, by me, and I'd like to piggyback on that. We would definitely be out looking for every source that we can, so um, once we decide which way we're going to go, that will definitely be part of our process to see what funds is available.
I'd like to hear uh Joe Duffy's input on that, too.
Yes, ma'am.
If you don't mind.
If we're discussing the cost for two A, can we go to the two A slide, please? Thank you.
There you go.
No, they are correct. Um, with WIFA, they do have lots of money available, but they also do forgivable principal. We are a disadvantaged community, because we have received forgivable principal in the past. And like Cindy said, we will pursue every avenue. USDA is also a real good choice to work down, and we might be able to get a lower interest rate with them than with, usually with is the best, so. We'll pursue every avenue that we can. Now, the one thing we do have to our advantage is we are starting, some of the debt we took in building the initial system is starting to roll off in the next few years. So we're going to have a little more debt capacity to take on. A three million dollar number the town can clearly afford. And in our rate study that we just put in, we actually put in five million dollars worth of capital for the wastewater treatment plant. So it's pretty much we've built in the rate increases we're going to need to service the debt. And hopefully, we'll get some forgivable principal or lower interest rates, so I think we'll be in pretty good shape to do this. The answer is, can we afford it? Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Can we afford to be?
Mark, I got I got another question. I'm sorry, what?
We can afford either.
I think you could afford either of those two alternatives. And remember, Mayor and Council, we were talking at ten or twelve million dollars is what we were thinking this expansion was going to be. So this is like, this is great compared to what we were looking at before. Just to, and and really, the biggest important thing is is giving the town time, that ten-year time during that ten years, and you can really figure out what you want to do for the next step for the processing. So it's it's a plus, it's a home run.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. My turn?
Go ahead.
Um. I got a couple of things. Uh, one is if option three is three million dollars less lower than option one, does that doesn't mean if we were going to put in the pumps and the membranes, it's going to cost us another three million dollars? Is that not fair assumption?
That's a fair assumption. It's a fair assumption.
And then we speak of redundancy often.
Quite a bit, yes.
Um. To me, it just seems like option three or two B is a better option in case we do get a populous rapid increase here. The the and we need more of the flow, we're not going to be able to get it from option two A. That's my question, kind of opinion question. Now you may comment.
You're looking at this option here, which has the uh the equalization basin all then ready to be um outfitted with future cassettes and additional capacity, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
That's my thought process, unless you can change that.
I'm in a.
Because to me, the sewer treatment plant in Paulden is a dream. Del Rio's a dream, been a dream for almost thirty years now, twenty years, something, so.
Frank's heart's breaking.
Is this something that's going to happen or?
Uh, it will, I just don't know in which generation's lifetime, so.
Maybe my great great grandchildren can buy something.
Remember, great grandpeppy, Jack. Um, so, yeah, that's what I was going to say. This this does provide that. It's it's a million dollars more. That's not an insignificant insignificant amount of money, but.
I agree with you, but.
Yeah.
I don't mean to interrupt you, and I'm sorry, but we talk about redundancy for another quick fix. We could throw pumps in this or whatever, the equipment, and it worked for three million dollars, where if we had to expand with option
two B.
Two B, no, this is two B.
Two A.
Two A.
Um, we can't do anything there, right?
Right. I I would say maybe one factor that would lean one way or the other is uh what sort of funding, if we got some sort of grant money. If they wouldn't give us a grant for two B, but they would give us a grant for that, that may be something else to consider. But if they gave us a grant for each one, you might be exactly right.
My main concern is you've been up here talking to us, and Mike's been talking about, we need to plan on expanding our plant.
Right.
And this option doesn't do that.
Right.
The other option has a possibility of doing that.
Right. So I'm just saying that if we get the same pot of money for both, I think you might be on to something.
What would it cost to run pipelines from here to Paulden?
It's it's a lot of money.
A lot more than the seven million, even if we wanted to fire this up.
But it's it's cheaper now than it will be then.
I agree with you, and.
So the.
That's why I'm, option one is very entertaining to me, too. I haven't closed it out of my mind.
Mayor, may I say something? Sorry. Uh, I've preached to you for years about the flow EQ basin, and that's what's going to address our peak flows and our peak biological surges. This two A is the only one that's going to provide a flow EQ. If you do two B, you'll provide a flow EQ until you fill it up with membranes. Now you're going to be the exact same situation you're at right now. You will need to put a flow EQ basin in front of that.
But your daily processing gallons per day goes way up, right?
But you're still going to have peak flows at noon every day. And be, your biological source is going to be overloaded every day, just like we are now.
Okay, but the average flow for the
Right.
This this one, no, not this. With this in operation, then it raises to like one point two million peak per day? Point seven, there's seven hundred and fifty thousand a day?
With all the membranes in it?
Yes. I think that's what he said. I don't have the slides.
Yeah, seven fifty.
Yeah, that's.
Right now, we're at two twenty. Right, the max?
Five hundred.
Oh, that's two twenty per hour. Is that what I'm saying? Per hour. So what's our peak for the plant right now? Eighty-two.
Eighty-two.
Sixteen.
Yeah, so. Is this on?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You just got to point it, it's directional.
You just got to point it, it's directional. Your peak day flow. Averages, well, okay, it's about sixteen. Your peak hour flow is about twenty-two thousand. So that is that is the highest flow rate that you put through the facility. So um, your facility is rated for half a million gallons a day.
Five hundred thousand.
That is exactly twenty thousand. So anything above there, your facility is not rated to do. If if you. Go with to be, which is not a bad option, obviously.
No.
But you still have this this peak graph that's still going to happen. And that line just goes from twenty thousand to forty thousand. You're still going to get this. This peak that will eventually press that line and then it's how long do you want to be above that line? And running those membranes at that flux rate, which they're allowable to do for short periods. The longer you do it, you run the risk of damage.
Yeah, because it, you said that it was a hundred and fifty thousand that those two tanks will hold?
A hundred thousand, approximately a hundred thousand.
So you can only run for five hours at this and then you'd be have those tanks full?
Correct.
And then you'd be back in the bind.
Right.
Yeah, the.
But I mean, it it it's based on your historical flow rates. That's the volume that you need to divert because you'll still be treating some of the flow as it's coming in. The rest of the flow will go over in your EQ to be held to be treated later.
I I guess really we're stuck with whatever you all tell us says best.
Let me throw another wrench in the works.
No, of course you're going to do that.
With this option, again, it goes back to, I think, uh. Councilman McCafferty's question about technology. The MBR, MBR stands for, I think, uh.
Membrane membrane.
Membrane bioreactor. So the membranes hold the bio stuff, but anyway, what it means is. It's sort of an old technology. Am I right, Mike? That 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 there's there's other technologies emerging that are more compact and efficient than the type of filters we use. So do we want to set up this to require? A specific type of filter now and then come back five years later and have to do that? Or do we want to build these EQ basins? Like this and then have the option of designing the new trains? To maybe take a different technology of treatment. A hybrid plant. So that's something it's it's not an easy answer either way.
It's not.
Did I explain that, Mark?
Yeah, I'm I'm going to piggyback on that real quick. So um, we touched on it briefly in the valuation that there is a new company. It's not a new company, it's been around for a while, but they picked up a new line of product. That um, is a membrane. Fits the same footprint as these cabota membranes and almost doubles the flow-through capacity. So as you mentioned, technology does progress, there could be an alternative within the next ten years. That you could replace these exact membranes. Just get higher throughput through them and not have to build another basin. So that's out there, we included a a existing product that would theoretically fit in these basins. And give you more hydraulic capacity. The biological capacity is not affected by the membranes, they're just a filter basically on the end of it, but.
I I just want to ask a question about the whole water quality thing though, because your peaks are causing water quality issues, right? So that's alarming, that could be potentially why we have recent findings we have, I don't know, I'm just saying it's potential. So the question I have is, how are you going to deal with the nitrogen? Just is this equalization basin alone can remedy that?
No, it 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 can help, but the nitrogen issue is is these two basins. You're anoxic and aerobic zones, which you are doing your your biological treatment in. The EQ is strictly holding it in place, it gives you a wide spot basically, so you can adjust if needed. Um, but the real trick or or fix for that is doing carbon dosing as needed. In order to rebalance the influence into your facility. So that is part of this, any of the alternatives is a basically a chemical dosing system that'll allow you to adjust.
Okay, so you're it's going to be a chemical.
Yeah.
Okay, alright.
Unless you guys identify um, the source of nitrogen in your system and you can eliminate that. And get the the influence characteristics back to where they were designed around. You wouldn't need that and this facility will start running like it was supposed to. Any other questions?
There we do. Um, I've got a note, we'd like to see a number one review and we'd like to hear Mr. Bové's opinion. You mean option one? Yeah, option one, one, no A or B, just one.
Which opinion of mine would you like, Mayor?
What is, what is best suited for this plant?
As long as it doesn't have anything to do with me, we're okay.
Okay, I I like I said, I I believe option number two A is the best because it does put a flow EQ basin in front of us. And what I've talked to council before was my biggest benefit as an operator. Uh, the flow EQ basin is going to take your hydraulic and biological surges and flatten them out. Right now, we're like Taylor was saying, right now we're producing or we're processing in the middle of the day when uh, costs are the highest. And our plant is going from idle at night, full throttle during the day. If we put a flow EQ basin in, we level out everything, we can run at a high idle twenty-four seven. Right there, you're reducing your electric, the wear and tear on all your equipment, plus wear and tear on the membranes. So that in itself, I think is a winner. I would think anyway, anytime anybody talks to me about MBR player, my first thing is they uh, put a flow EQ basin in front of it. The number one thing you should do, just for those purposes I just mentioned.
Anything else? Anything else over here for him while he's up there?
Didn't you execute the stop app so he can't retire?
Then I have fifty working days. But I'm not counting.
Doesn't sound like it.
Any other questions?
If you had the option between option one and option two A, which would you prefer?
I would still go with two A.
Really? Okay, thank you.
Because that will address the issues that we're having right now.
Right now, okay. I appreciate it, thank you.
Yeah, and the cost is the other option, but if you ask Mr. Duffy, he knows I don't care about cost. So uh, but I I I'm looking at processes. What's the best for the job, what what's the best for our equipment to use in? Uh, like I say, I suggest anybody, a lot of people come to look at our plant and always suggest. First thing is put a flow EQ in front of it.
Thank you.
And two A is big enough?
It it's going to give us ten years of time. Right there, it'll give us ten years of time. All these options are going to buy us the time that you need to to do your research to see how you want to move forward.
Thank you.
Yeah, the the if I can add the trick with some of the timeframes is we've actually. When all of the apartments and things were coming in, we were afraid they would all hit at once. That hasn't been the case since I've been here over the five or six years. We've seen a fairly consistent growth of probably what sixty, eighty homes a year? Coming into town, so that's pretty consistent, that's one way, one reason we're kind of backing off the dire need. But ideally, if money was no object, I would say we do alternative one plus alternative two A. But then you're spending twelve, fourteen million dollars all at once now when you may not need all of that capacity. And then things might change before the plant reaches its capacity. So it's just don't want to, you know. Build a six-bedroom house when you only have one kid and not sure if you're going to have more sort of thing.
That's what dogs suffer.
Say, if you live in my house, you know.
So. That that's kind of what we're looking at.
Any more questions over here at all? John? No, I'm good, thank you.
The town attorney was present, does he have anything to throw in there and?
He don't talk.
Dazzle us with, I know it's Mike, but we should be able to get a word out of him or nod or something.
He's nodding his head.
Mayor Council, I I I'm happy to go on a length and opine about public works. But frankly, they uh, they know much more about it here and and get estimates and and. The people that work in this know what they're doing better than I do.
Okay, thank you.
We are happy to work through all the contracting issues and everything, of course, when that comes.
Let me go on mic here.
Which one I got?
Okay, so if we go to two A. Um, which is the most cost-effective, which I appreciate.
Do you want the numbers?
No, I'm okay with the number, uh, I'm thinking about. Okay, so.
There's two A.
What can we add? To make? This plant successful and not coming back a lot? Like, I'm not saying let's raise the cost, but I am saying let's raise the cost a little bit because I was kind of expecting to spend more. But like, extra membranes, maybe Mike should come back up here, what would the plant need?
Uh, well, I can tell you a couple of things before they start talking about membranes.
Okay.
We've designed and completed the design of of drying beds. We need to put those in still. Uh, we've we've got a corner reserved up here in the top left for those. What those do is when we uh, have our vector truck or a contractor come in, clean out the lift station. It dumps all the trash and debris in there and and we suck the water out of it and run the water through the plant. And then haul all the trash to the dumpster, that's what a drying bed does for those that don't know. We need to put those in because right now it's costing us an arm and a leg and they don't really have anywhere. To to do that and need that close by. The other component with that is with the drying beds, you need a vector truck and I'm. I know I can't put it in the design of the contract, but with the financing, our vector truck is very old. And it's a hazard and we need to maybe, it's a half a million dollars, it's not a small investment. But with the financing, see if we could wrap the financing of a vector truck in with this as well. And I'm going to push for that, even though the attorney says I can't wrap it in the same contract. We probably could work the financing together. So that's what I would do, but as far as maybe, uh, Taylor, I don't know if you have any advice on. Finding a way for some redundancy with the filters or?
Sure, yeah, I I can certainly spend money if I need to, so. Um, spare membranes are always needed as I I think fifty is probably a little too low to keep on hand. Because as he said, you have four forty thousand, something like that? Four thousand, yeah, so. Yeah, I would say at least ten percent should be stocked and ready to go. So um, we do suggest maybe looking at your sludge. Uh, processing, so you have a direct WAZ pump off of your uh, system, which is just waste activated sludge. It's it's this, the the biological growth that you want to get rid of. So you de-water it, you have a screw press right now, you have one. That screw press goes down, you're just going to build up biological mass in your system until it's fixed. You have nowhere else to put it really, so either redundant screw press, uh, drying beds are a great place. Just a haul-out station or a sludge storage tank. You could also add that to the project and those um, would give you more flexibility on your solids management. Which is expensive, so if you manage it well and you decrease the volume of solids to be water. It ultimately pays for itself because you're hauling less waste to a landfill. The. The UV um, system, I believe, is a little outdated. Um, I think there are more energy-efficient, low-pressure UV systems that can be installed in the same exact footprint that you have right now. Uh, that's something that we recommended and.
You're saying it's an inefficient UV system, it's slow?
Uh, it's energy inefficient, so UV does pull a lot of electricity to run those light bulbs, so. Um, there are more energy-efficient light bulbs that you can use and I. I don't know if it's worth looking into, but there's some that will will vary the free, not the frequency, but the intensity of the light based on how much flow you're putting through it, so. I don't think there's really much to do with your infiltration basins or effluent pumps that you could add to there. But um, there's also admin and maintenance space, if that's something that Mike needs, they have a pretty great facility, so I don't. I don't think there's much that you would add there.
If if I could jump in, sorry, one more thing to consider, at least. Preparing for is if we ever going to need odor control out there and that'll depend for how the area develops. If we start getting some tight development around that plant, we might need to add some odor control measures in there. So at least design to be able to take those in the future.
Mayor and Council, if I may, so there's a lot of speculation of things going on here and I I truly appreciate Councilmember Perkins. Um, being we if we have money in the budget, maybe we find some extra way to spend it on things that are important. Um, tonight, I I would like to see us decide on one of these options and I think it'd be great when we come back to say. There was this much budget left, here are the items that will help us and bring that before you all to consider as well. So I appreciate that, thank you.
I'm very sorry to interrupt you, any questions for staff? Okay, I'll go first, we can't give a vote, but we can give direction, I'm okay with two A. Um, and maybe a a list of those options and cost, any?
I'm okay with two A and would like a list of those options with costs and what we can afford, please.
Yeah, two A is it, but bring everything to the table when we come.
I agree, let's let's do two A because we're here, let's do it right the first time.
I agree also with two A.
Okay, I have nothing else, anything else?
No, I just wanted to stand here because no one else was.
Okay. Are you done?
Yes, sir.
Sherry?
I make a motion, we adjourn.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor? I we're adjourned, thank you all.
Meanwhile, I have a cassette stuck in my truck, will these guys help with that? Jesus.
I think he turns it off out here, but not in there.
It's still, it's still too much to consider here.